Good afternoon and welcome to the Thurston County Public Hearing for Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. The topic today is the 2021 Budget. And I'm Commissioner John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. Zooming in from a remote location is the Vice Chair, Commissioner Ty Mensah. Gary Edwards is absent. And we have County Manager Ramiro Chavez here, and we also have online zooming in, the Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell. And we have Amy Davis, the Clerk of the Board. And we also have our PIO, Megan Porter, here. So with that-
You may want to notice for the record, Commissioner Edwards is absent.
I did?
I'm sorry, missed that. Sorry, thank you.
The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider testimony on the proposed 2021 budget for transportation and land use and environmental issues, or environmental use, Public Works, community planning, and economic development. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined by Zoom, emailed comment, or mailed comment. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select Announcements of Public Hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted in that location. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen in and follow along, please live or please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell will provide information along with Department Directors or their delegates. Assuming that, once they're done, we get to the public comment, we'll go to the people that are in the boardroom, testify, and then we will make comment, and then we'll go to the Zoom, then we'll go to the phone, see if there's anybody on the phone. The way it's going to work is, as yesterday, because we are reconvening after we recessed last evening from public hearing, the citizen has three minutes of uninterrupted time for comments and/or questions. The official then provides a brief response or offers to get back to the citizens if the answer is detailed or complex. And then the citizen will have two minutes to follow up or comment. If they have questions, additional questions, the staff will get back to them as soon as they can. So with that, Robin will provide an overview of what we're going to do this afternoon. So I'm turning to Robin.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioner, thank you. Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager. And this afternoon, as stated, we are continuing our public hearings on the Thurston County budget proposed for 2021.
Robin, I forgot one important technical piece. Public hearing is now open.
That's an important part.
It is.
Public hearing. So just to recap a bit of how we got here, the public hearing for county budgets has a date set in statute. We do not have an option, well, we do have an option. You can hold the public hearing on the first Monday in October, or you can choose an alternative date for the first Monday in December. And that's what Thurston County does. We hold it in December. That gives offices, departments, budget staff, and the Board more time to work on the budget and come up with the best possible budget for the county. We've been talking about the schedule for this hearing since January. We had specific meetings on January 30th and February 18th. We published the approved schedule for the December 7th and 8th dates in our budget instructions in June. On September 9th, I sent out an email to all county officials reminding them to save the dates and to be here on December 7th and 8th. Because these are the dates set by law, we published the schedule in the Commissioners' binders when we did budget review beginning on October 5th. The preliminary budget book was available online and in hard copy as required by law on November 23rd. And the hearing was published in the Olympian on November 23rd and November 30th. So that brings us to today. If it's got to be the first Monday, what are we doing talking on Tuesday? Well, the law also allows for the public hearing to be continued for up to five days. And I'm very happy that our county will get through our public hearings in two days and that it's not going to take five days to do this. But we are following the law, and the entire budget process really is governed by state law, which is the conversation for another day. But here we are on the legal date, having these conversations. I'm going to share my screen. And then I have to move this thing off the screen that's being shared, if I can find my cursor. Okay, so this afternoon, here's the schedule for the public hearing. Yesterday, you heard about law and justice and general government. And then I gave a overview of the entire budget yesterday evening, and you took comments on the budget. Today, we'll hear from the Directors for Transportation, Environment, and Land Use this afternoon at 4:00, Healthy Human Services, including emergency services. At 6:00, you'll hold the public hearing on the Capital Improvement Plan, which we have aligned with our budget. And then at 6:15, we'll resume with a second overview of the budget, and I'll try to focus on some of the economic factors in the forecast and final questions and comments from the public. So that's our day today. Allowed a little more time this afternoon for the departments that you'll hear from because these are your big county departments, and each of these departments has a lot of things that they provide. Unlike an office like, oh, the prosecuting attorney has a fairly focused core business of providing legal advice and prosecution. Some of the departments that you'll hear from today have a very long list of core services that they provide. So there's more time to discuss those. Here's an overview of the operating budget, just to start with what's the bottom line for operating. We anticipate $368.2 million in revenue this year, oh, no, next year, this is all next year, and $371.4 million in expenditures next year. So we anticipate spending a little more than we think that we're going to bring in. You'll hear more about your capital budget today. These are the areas of the capital budget compared this year and next year. We anticipate expenditures will be less. This $52 million was the budget for this year, wasn't actually spent this year, $52 million. And one of the reasons that your capital budget goes down is we are, at this time, not moving forward with the courthouse that we anticipated when you set the budget for $52 million. So that's the big, one of the big changes. This afternoon, the process is, as Commissioner Hutchings described, I will introduce the budget, and then the Department Director will have an opportunity to speak. Then we'll go to Q and A and move on to the next. So we're gonna jump right in with community planning and economic development. We have this afternoon with us Director Josh Cummings, and he is joined by Linda O'Neil, the finance staff. CPED has quite a few core things that they provide for the county. They have the authority to review land use applications, regulations, development and construction permits. They review for compliance with federal permits for stormwater standards. The WSU Extension Services is part of CPED, as we call it, and the County Fair is also part of the CPED organization within the county. The budget for next year includes increases in land purchase authority to align with our Habitat Conservation Plan. General Fund support is increased for our co-compliance services. And there's funding to implement Phase Two of direct appropriation. This is a little technical, but if you look at the General Fund, there's an increase there, and it's mainly due to this shift to direct appropriation where rather than, and I'm sorry to launch into this technical explanation, but rather than have a fund pay for something and then bill the General Fund, the General Fund will defer items that will ultimately come from it. So with those comments, I am now going to turn it over to Josh.
Thanks, Robin. I don't have a ton to say other than in honor of trying to keep our requests short from the Board, CPED worked really hard to make sure that we were managing within our budgets this last year, even though economic times have been uncertain. And I'd really like to say huge thanks to the budget staff. Robin and Denise and Olivia and that team has just been extremely supportive of our group. As Robin said, we have a lot of different varying core businesses, and the budgets can get a little bit intertwined and a little confusing, but we've been able to pull through it, and we're happy to have this transparent path forward.
All right, thank you, Josh. Is that the extent of your presentation, then?
That is the extent of my presentation. Thank you.
You're very welcome. So now we'll open this up for public comment.
Commissioner Mensah has a question.
Oh, I didn't see, go ahead, Commissioner Mensah.
Just since Robin just had that slide up, can I just ask a question about it?
Yeah, let me put it back on the screen.
Thank you, Ramiro.
So the direct appropriation issue, if the concept is to not have money paid out, why would it, of the Department Fund and have it comes directly from General Fund? Oh, I see. Okay, I got you. This is the, okay, this is General Fund. I was trying to figure out why there was an increase, but it's because a certain number of money might have been going through a different fund and not actually booked under General Fund. Okay, I got you.
Exactly right.
Okay, I had it backwards.
It, when you do your financial statements, it almost looks like things are double booked, and we're trying to get away from that. We're trying to get away from all the journal entries and one fund billing another and try to streamline the process.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't see you, Ty.
One more second.
So what we're up for public comment now, and just to reiterate, and for those that may have joined us, the citizen has three minutes uninterrupted for comments and/or questions. The official will provide a brief response or offer to get back to the citizen if the answer is detailed or complex. And then the citizen has two minutes to follow up or comment as well. And with that, I'll start with those that are personally in the room here, and that's
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and good afternoon, Mr. Cummings. I need to be asking some questions, and of course, my concern is I'm related and involved a lot with development projects of varying natures. And to keep it specific to more of what you're alignment with, I want to make it noted that you are kind of what we refer to as an enterprise fund. So the vast majority of your funds actually come from the fee schedules that are charged. And I just want you to be able to confirm that when it's your opportunity. But my concern is also in the aspects of fee schedules. While recognizing that the fee schedule is designed to offset the cost of the employees, I thought it might be notable that the Commissioner should know that, you know, based upon the fee schedule that you have, the basic for community planning and economic development is, we'll call it straight, at $200 an hour. It's basically for a month's worth of work from a CPED staff person related to that, $36,000 a year. As a developer, project manager of variety nature, I'm wondering, do you see that since that cost is considerably higher than the actual employee cost, is there a direct relationship to that $200 an hour to the cost of having your employee work on these particular things? Or is this more of a fee that is related to the general cost of the entire department as opposed to a specific development cost? Now, another question I have is, I noticed that you have also base fees, and then you have added fees for every hour of time you put in. For instance, if a person puts in a, well, let's use something that we're both familiar and won't be talked about to speak of, but a reasonable use permit. For a reasonable use permit exception, there's a base fee of about $3,600 plus. And then beyond that, you also, besides that, anything beyond the basic cart, you also charge additional per hour fee, which includes hours they put in during perhaps a hearing for a hearings examiner. And that doesn't necessarily include a hearings examiner fee all the time. So we'd like to know what a basic, normal, reasonable use exception with all the costs involved and all the fees, how much about does the department collect on those fees? And then another question which I'm going to have, well, there you go, you got yours.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Josh.
Okay, so I'll take a quick shot, and then I'll likely hand it over to Robin and the team. And if I got the questions right, let me, or if I missed something, let me know. So first, to confirm, a portion of CPED is an enterprise fund. The development services, which as the Board had voted in the past, is 100% cost recovery. So all of the fees that are charged to the citizen go to supporting the staff that do that permanent plan review. Other portions of CPED are not enterprise funded, they're General Fund funded, the Community Planning Group, and other portions of the department. The fair is a bit of a hybrid. It's part enterprise fund and then part General Fund. So that's the question number one. Robin, did I miss anything from that for confirmation?
Nope, that's exactly right. We pay for the enterprise sections through fees, and the other parts of the department are paid mainly through General Fund.
And then I think the second question, well, the second, third, and maybe fourth question, all relate to the fees and how they're calculated, whether it's base fee or the direct relationship with the General Fund. We have an opportunity to do a fee study. We've got money in the budget to look at how we have calculated the fees in the past and how we can do them going into the future. So I think these are all important questions that the citizen raises at this event, and it is something that we're interested in going through. In terms of the specifics on the collection and where it's routed, that is technical information that we'd have to do some research on and get back to the citizen if he so chooses. But I think the big picture here is we're doing a fee study going forward to also make sure that we're in the right path.
Do you have anything to add to that, Robin, at all?
No.
Okay. But you have two more minutes.
Okay, thank you. Well, Commissioners, I'm just going to address these comments directly to you. In terms of what I see is, is that the concept of building of economic environment that is beneficial has to require that people end up not having such excess fees that it's become prohibitive for them to be able to move forward. That clearly has been the case here in Thurston County. The fee schedule as defined is really an overall fee schedule that pays in excess of the actual cost for the services being provided to the individual developer or to the individual party that has submitted a request for a change in the comp plan review. The concept that government somehow is assessing fees is also if you drain out everybody from their, from their process to the point that they don't have the ability to make sense out of it. And a good example is you recently renewed a homeless encampment ordinance. The cost is too prohibitive and too encumbering to make it worthwhile for anyone to use. Sometimes you need to provide a service, and then the more business that's generated will also generate extra income. But if you shut down business, you make it impossible to have to pay extreme costs like a preliminary plat, it's $7,000 for a preliminary plat. It raises the cost of housing. You say you want to be able to have affordable housing? It cannot happen when you have an excessive fee schedule. Fees should be in line with means to help promote, not to show a form of resistance or a free market. If you want to continue to have people provide service, maybe allow the private sector to generate the reports and everything that need to be done instead of the government being the one to dictate and have a monopoly on the process for development.
Thank you, Ms. Pett. We'll go to the Zoom screen.
We're moving to the Zoom, and I have Ms. Lisa Reiner. We'd like to provide testimony on the community economic development CPED budget.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You have, do you hear the rules of engagement for public testimony?
Yes.
Okay, you have three minutes, which uninterrupted, and you may ask questions, and the Director will follow up with those answers.
And will you state your name, please, ma'am? Thank you.
Yes, I'm Lee Ramor, and I live 2103 Harrison Avenue, Olympia, Washington, 9502. My concern today regarding Thurston County budget, many of us feel that the people who have lived in Thurston County for a long time, such as myself, we have paid our fair share of the improvements for the roads, our fair share for the improvements for a number of Thurston County services. And we are grateful for those services, of course, and we're grateful for the opportunity to pay for those services. New developments coming into Thurston County, we hope that they pay for their share of these services. We, the established citizens of Thurston County, do not want to have to pay for the new group of people coming in. They should pay their fair share. And so if we're talking about schedules for staff employees to review these permits, it is certainly in line that staff should be able to do their due diligence. They have been trained. They know how to deal with growth issues. We are concerned about our environment. Many of us are concerned about water issues here in Thurston County. Many of us are concerned about stormwater issues and septic tank issues. Many of us are concerned about the green algae and the likes. And so our concern is that the staff who is on, been trained by Thurston County are the ones who know these problems, and they know the history. And so we are very confident that Thurston County will be able to keep us safe here environmentally in Thurston County. But we have to have decent staff. And so I believe that we should ask developers to pay their fair share, and if it's $200 an hour for staff, so be it. I think that growth should pay for growth in Thurston County, which means that when developers come in, they have to pay for environmental rules and regulations, and they have to pay for their permits, just like we all have paid over these decades. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you have any specific question for the Director, by any chance?
I didn't know if there had been an actual calculation regarding incoming development costs per, historically, what many of us have paid over time. I don't know if that's even a equitable question, but the history of what we have paid in taxes and these new developers coming in, trying to get lower impact fees or lower fees in general.
So is there a question?
I'm very concerned, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you like to follow up on that, Josh?
Josh, yeah, thank you.
I'd just say the citizen's input is acknowledged.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you very much.
The citizens have joined us this afternoon who would like to provide public testimony on their proposed 2021 community planning and economic development budget. Please unmute yourself, state your name, where you reside in the county, you have three minutes.
None, sir.
None, okay. So at this time, public comment is closed on this topic. And Commissioner Mensah, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I think I'm good.
All right, thank you, sir, as am I. Robin, any final talking points?
Not on CPED, we can move right into Public Works.
Okay, got it.
Okay, Public Works is led by Director Jennifer Walker, who is here with you this afternoon, along with Karen Wies, who is the Financial Manager for Public Works. Public Works is responsible for our road and transportation system in Thurston County. They're also responsible for management of solid waste, noxious weeds, lake management districts, utilities, parks, trails, and storm and surface water. So this is an extensive, very large department and a- So this is an extensive, very large department and a big part of the county budget. The budget for next year adds three positions to Public Works, a right-of-way agent, an asset manager, and a parks maintenance person. And the parks maintenance person is contingent on having funding available for that FTE. The budget implements Phase Two of direct appropriation. That's where part of the budget will come directly from the general fund for the first time in Public Works. There are a number of operating and project studies in the Public Works budget. And that will assist with determination of future projects across all of these books of business in this department. There's an authorization to increase rates and charges for both the Long Lake and the Lake Lawrence Management District. And there is funding for software upgrades for our water and sewer utilities. And at this time, I will invite Jennifer to make any comments that she would like to share with the board.
Thank you. I will also make this brief. I do want to say that while we are certainly in historic times, one constant that remains is Public Works continues to provide essential services to our community. So whether we're responding in flooding, to flooding or a snow and ice event, or now a pandemic, we continue to ensure our roads are safe to travel, that folks have a place to dispose of their garbage, our utility customers have water and sewer service, and many other activities that impact people's daily lives. To say that I am proud of the Public Works team is an understatement. Over the past eight or nine months, through closures and phased openings, they have remained flexible and adapted how they do their work and continue to adapt to provide essential services to our community. I'd also like to thank and express my appreciation to the board for your thoughtful leadership and to the county manager, assistant county manager, and the budget team for their support. The conservative budget that Public Works submitted for 2021 aligns with the county strategic plan with an emphasis on the strategic initiative number eight to support robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community. So we're focused on taking care of what we have and ensuring we're planning for the future, which I see as also important elements for a vital economy. The Public Works has a combined budget of just over $102 million. We manage 23 separate funds and 80% of the county's capital projects, so we do have quite a bit of responsibility. As Robin mentioned, I do have Karen Wies with me here today, the manager of our financial and asset management division, and she's also serving as our interim solid waste manager. So she will assist me in responding to any questions we may receive today.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Any other follow-up? Okay, Commissioner Minster, go ahead.
Jennifer, can you remind me the contingency on that parks FTE? Was that based on a, I mean, Robin just said funding, but I thought it was more specific than that. Like based on a legislative change to allow cer, can you remind me exactly what we did there?
Yes, it was contingent upon getting, the, having the ability to be able to use park impact fee money for operations, for maintenance and operations, which we are not able to do at this time. So we are not anticipating filling that position unless there is revenue received to do that. And Karen, do you want to add something? Because I, I am thinking I missed something there. No?
You got it exactly right.
Okay.
No, that's just, I just want to point out that it's, there, there's a legislative change that can, that's a prerequisite to us making that new, that move and filling that spot. And if we did, then, then we'd be able to utilize funds that, you know, the budget impact would be minimized because we'd be able to use those impact fees that are, that are now limited in terms of what they can be used for.
Correct.
And I wanted to make sure I remembered that right. Thank you.
I would add to that, though, that the, at this point in time, I'm not aware of a bill being offered that would do that. We had talked about it last year and it didn't go anywhere. And this coming legislative session, from what we've been told, is going to be very restricted in bills that are dropped. So in my opinion, the likelihood of that legislation passing is, is extremely low.
Thank you, Robin. I, I think one of the things that we are always very, very mindful of, and it is a strategy for us when we're dealing with parks and trails, is hope. So we, we are, you know, hopeful.
I'm hopeful too, but I guess the, the part of the reason that I make this statement is that I would recommend to the board that if we could come up with any sustainable funding for this position, that perhaps we should consider it and not limit ourselves to the hope of that one particular piece of legislation passing.
Fair enough.
Very nice. Okay, so we'll open this up for public comment on Public Works. Ms. Pettit?
Good afternoon, commissioners and director. Director, you mentioned being so proud of your agency. I would have to say that's probably an understatement for what you accomplished. So I am very pleased with all my interactions with your agency. I don't always have to agree with everything, but I certainly am pleased because you've been very good and people have been very good about addressing my issues. A couple of questions, which I'm going to kind of give you a sequence of questions. You might start taking notes. Approximately how many miles of roadway do you actually maintain in the county? One of the other notes I would have is about how much does it cost per mile to maintain those roads? And the, the cycle of how many years that you need to be processing to maintain all of them within a standard, to keep them up in a, a rated condition of a one or a two type of level. Another question I have is, it, it appears that the current county road levy may actually be well in excess of the needs for the department because through the history, the county has diverted $4 million plus for a number of years out of the county road. It's either diverted or shifted, as we'd refer to it. Is that amount of money unnecessary to maintain the roads and the, and the infrastructure that we would have? And another note is, is that I recall that you're also out of the general road fund. You're going to be seeking to build a sand shed for a little over a million dollars. Is that also a cost that is actually kind of a capital improvement that's using road funds for it? And if so, is that something that maybe we could look at different? We aren't doing any repairs on our courthouse complex up here, but it looks like we're going to be spending over a million dollars out there, out of your road funds. Being I live in the county, I have great concern about the quality of roads. I'm fortunate I live on Rich Road, which has a very superior road surface. Although I do seem to collect a lot of stormwater from the road running down my driveways and stuff, but things happen and, and the county's been really good about working with things. So I have no complaint on that.
All right, there you go, Jennifer.
Okay. Let me see if I got all of the questions. So the first question was the miles of roadway we maintain. At this point, we're maintaining approximately 1,038 miles of road. The cost per mile to maintain, that varies. It also, it depends on whether it's a county road or it's a road that's in the unincorporated, or excuse me, in the UGA. And so that is actually one of the figures that I have been working with staff to determine the cost. We know what it costs for preservation in terms of new, new construction or overlay or chip seal, but the cost for maintenance on a county road, the average cost, we're still putting that together. With respect to the, the levy shift, I think that certainly the reduction of funding through a levy shift does minimize the resources that we have to maintain our infrastructure. I also think that the board recognizes that and is, actually this year starting, or beginning of next year, starting to make some reductions to that levy shift. But we also are here as a department for the county and the county has overall priorities as well that they're taking into consideration. With respect to the sand shed, again, that continues to help us with our response and operation. So certainly if there were funding available through REIT One, that's always an option, but this is what we had planned and earmarked for that facility.
You have two minutes?
I have two minutes.
Certainly.
Okay, for this, I, I, well, first I'll just state appreciation. We didn't quite get to what I expected, which you were going to reply for maintaining with a, some type of chip seal, about $40,000 per mile for road maintenance and a cycle of probably usually eight years maximum for serving. So we aren't, it appears to me we're not getting the job done in terms of keeping up. And it's strictly based upon the fact that the revenue is being diverted or shifted away from the county roads. That being said, we pay particularly a tax for the transportation purposes. And when you take that away, half the people in the county, all of them that are actually paying directly into that, that are seeking the services of maintaining our roads, we're all being shorted on that. And so from the viewpoint of a resident, I, I think that if you aren't going to maintain the roads with the road tax and you're going to shift it, you can get, don't need it, then you should eliminate that much tax off the basis. And then maybe when you need it again, you decide you want to use it for what it was actually specified for, then I would seek to do something with it. I would encourage, as far as the sand shed, it seems odd to have one location to serve all your sand from when, if you had several different sites, perhaps even at the transfer station set aside for gathering sand. It would be more efficient and you could cover each one with a little bit of a tarp for those limited times you actually need sand to be dispersed. I, I do appreciate the roads. I just like to see taxes used in their appropriate fashion. And so you get a, a thumbs up and a kudos from me for your operations. But I do have concerns about the commissioners taking too much money from your department.
Thank you. Jennifer, do you have any response to that? Any comment?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Minster, do you have any? Go ahead, sir.
It's a question for Robin. Robin, that one point, I think it's 1.5 million that gets diverted. There's also a levy shift, but I'm just speaking solely about the diversion. Where does that money go?
That pays directly for sheriff deputies for road safety. So it's road patrol in the sheriff's office.
And would there be, is it fair to say that if we didn't divert, if that money wasn't diverted, there'd be, that would directly affect road deputies in terms of numbers, staff that we could provide to the person in charge?
There would be less money available for the board to fund sheriff deputies on the road.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we'll go to Zoom.
I see that Ms. Reiner is still online. We'd like to provide public testimony this afternoon on the 2021 proposed Public Works budget.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, the other resident that just spoke up, brought up a very good point. I was going to talk today about how much the parks here in Thurston County are so important to the residents. And I wanted to emphasize the importance of spending money to protect our parks and to keep the park maintenance going, to have the staffing of the parks. We need eyes and ears on the ground, which is staffing for our parks, because we love our Thurston County parks. So thank you, the staff and everyone who has helped us have beautiful parks. But as this gentleman just spoke regarding more money for roads, essentially, I agree with him. I think we should take money away from the sheriff's department for this safety road, road patrol. Why should we give the sheriff's department more money for safety road patrol when it should go toward chip seal? As the last person just commented, many of us feel that per capita costs of residents here in Thurston County, between some rural residents and some people that live closer to the city's core, perhaps is not balanced, shall we say. I know in the past, I have lived out in the rural areas and it seems like the urban areas are subsidizing the rural, the rural areas in terms of roads. They're subsidizing the rural areas in terms of public safety, such as the sheriff's department. And so I agree. I think we should not allow this diversion, this 1.5 million dollar shift to go to the sheriff's department for safety road patrol. I think it's entirely inequitable. And we should put that money, perhaps, I believe, in the parks. I think we need more staffing for the parks. I need, we need more eyes and ears on the ground for Thurston County parks to make sure that our buildings are safe, that our trails are not trashed by off-roaders taking their vehicles off-road and onto these trails. On some of these trails, I, my concern is people are taking four-wheelers. And so we need eyes and ears on the ground to protect our parks. So in general, again, I love the parks and thank you for allowing us to comment today. Thank you.
Do you have a specific question?
So this diversion from the sheriff's department, 1.5 million dollars, that would only be for which span of time? Beginning and ending when?
So I'll take that. The road diversion is, it's through the course of a whole year. And commissioners have been diverting funds from the road fund to pay for sheriff operations for, I would say at least 10 years. It hasn't always been 1.5 million. It's been in various amounts, but the last few years, that's how much it's been. And I just want to clarify when I say for a road patrol for traffic safety, what these deputies are doing is it pays for their time for stopping and investigating DUI, so driving under the influence, speeding, response to accidents on the road, things that are actions that a sheriff's deputy takes on the rural roads to make them more safe for all drivers. So that's what I mean when I say safety.
A, a quick question, Robin. I don't know if I'm allowed to have a quick question, follow-up on that.
Yes, yes, you are.
So my concern is that I know that the sheriff overspent their budget. And many of us here in the county are very concerned about how Snaza overspent his Thurston County budget. And then is this, this budget that was overspent, is this part of those monies that you're speaking of, Robin, or that doesn't have anything to do with how Snaza overspent his Thurston County sheriff's budget?
I would say that it is not related to the reasons that Sheriff Snaza overspent his budget last year. What this 1.5 million dollars in diversion does is it creates revenue to the general fund. That creates capacity for the board to be able to That creates capacity for the board to be able to fund the sheriff at the level that they do. So it, that doesn't have a direct relationship to the sheriff's management of his funds.
What's another way of saying that? I'm kind of confused, that last sentence.
So the sheriff, you know, every year, every office and department knows how much money they have to manage for the year, right? And the sheriff knew how much his budget was. The 1.5 million dollars was just one piece of an $18 million budget. It's not as if he overspent in the road patrol part of his budget. Is that making sense?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Robin. I appreciate you clarifying how he overspent his budget. And I guess it was filled through the general fund, that overspending.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Ms. Reiner.
Thank you. Robin, or Jennifer, I'll start with Jennifer. Do you have any other... Oh, go to the phone, I'm sorry. Yep, phone. I'm used to no one being there.
Good afternoon from the members of the public who have joined us via conference call this afternoon. If you would like to provide public testimony related to the proposed 2021 Public Works budget, please unmute yourself, state your name, where you reside in the county. You have three minutes.
None, sir.
Okay. Jennifer, any follow-up comments?
A couple of items. First, just for clarification, that the diversion, that traffic law enforcement is allowed by state law through diversion. Secondly, in clarification, the question about maintenance and the cost per mile on maintenance. And then the follow-up comment that the citizen made, what I would say is that for preservation, so when we talk about preserving the existing roadway that we have, that the cost for that, for example, chip seals, $50,000 a mile, overlay is $300,000 a mile, and then the rural road upgrade, $1.2 million a mile. And so what we've talked about in the past is that we know that if we do some of those less expensive, more preservation-type routine maintenance on those roads, that it saves us money over the long run, as opposed to having to do a complete rebuild on that road.
Boy, thank you. You answered my questions for me. But I'll add to it. Commissioner, oh, do you have anything to add, Robin, before I go to Commissioner Minster? Okay. Commissioner Minster, any questions or comments?
No, I don't think so. I think it's been covered.
All right. And my question is going to be, the road fund shift, it's legal, and it's audited and passes audit, and it's also scrutinized and watched by other organizations. See how it's, how it's used and how, why it's shifted, for what purpose? From what I understand, other counties have had their hands slapped for diverting more funds to the road, the road shift, that weren't perhaps allowable or permissible. Is that correct?
I'm going to let Robin speak to that.
Thank you.
I am not aware of other counties that have been penalized for improper use of road funds. I know that in Thurston County, a few years ago, we did a thorough review of how we use road diversion dollars. At the time, the County Road Administration Board of the State of Washington made new rules that were more restrictive than the ones that we had had in the past. So the road diversion dollars can only be used to support the sheriff's activities that make the road more safe. So that is exactly what we do with those funds. And as you say, they are closely scrutinized. And every year, we receive our cert... Is it a certificate of good standing?
Good practice.
Yep.
Good practices. And the county receives that each year.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Minster?
Yeah, so I'll just make two comments on that. So the, I guess part of the reason I asked the question that I asked about the use of those funds was it connects to yesterday's presentation from the sheriff's office, which Ms. Reiner might not have been, she might have been watching on YouTube. I don't remember her being on the Zoom. But we had a presentation about staffing and the struggles there. So I just wanted to make that connection, and it connects to Mr. Pedd's comment as well. And then on the diversion, or I'm sorry, on the levy shift, the board has done a preliminary, you know, proposed reduction. And I would have advocated for a more aggressive reduction had we not had the unknown pandemic response obligations that we're just not sure where they're going to, what they're going to entail and how much. As the county manager said earlier today, we're, we're spending $1 million a month, I think, and federal relief is about to expire. So we're really in an unknown situation. I have confidence that the, that there's going to be some changes. There's going to be some improvements with the virus. There's going to be some, some new leadership at the federal government. There's going to be all, but there could also be, there's some positive possibilities and some negative possibilities. We just don't know. So I just wanted, for me, it was important to set, to set the train on the track, so to speak, of saying that we recognize we cannot continue to shift from our road fund at this aggressive level and start that process of change.
Thank you. And to that, I will add that the, I'll hook you back up. I have the, I have faith in Josh Cummings, the director of SEEPED, and with you, Jennifer Walker, Director of Public Works, with your, how canny you both are and ethical. And you scrutinize all of this before it even gets to our level, and you're watchful. And so I have that amount of confidence in both of you as directors and also in Robin Campbell and her team, down to the penny scrutinizing the tax dollars. And I appreciate that. It makes my job a lot easier. So thank you. With that, oh, go ahead. Okay.
I just did, I just said, "Thank you." I appreciate that. And I think from my perspective, I am so grateful, I mentioned it earlier, but so grateful for the Public Works team that I have. Even just the follow-up that I did, I'm going to give a shout out to my county engineer who was sending me emails and responding to questions. So they're definitely engaged, and so I appreciate them.
You have to have that, someone watching your back. So thank you, and that completes public comment. And it actually completes this public hearing. And we're going to be in recess until 4:00 PM. And Robin, tell us what's coming up.
So what we'll have at 4 o'clock is Public Health and Social Services and Emergency Services. And before you close the Zoom, I just want to thank Josh and Jennifer and their teams for making the time to engage this afternoon and for all the work that they've done on the budget. The budget team for being here again with us today. And thanks to the Commissioners for hanging in while we review all these budgets. So until 4 o'clock.
So 4 o'clock, we are in recess. Thank you.